Verify compliance with open meetings laws, notification and adoption of the agenda. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Next up, we have our item three on the agenda, comments from the audience regarding agenda items. Would anyone care to address the board on any item? If so, we ask you to please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone care to address the board this evening?
Hi, good evening. I'm Bernard Shaw, 101-60-Wittenhall Court in Hales Corners. I really just have one question, which is when the presentation is made on the demographic study, will that be in open communication where we can ask clarifying questions?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a committee of the whole meeting.
It's a committee of the whole, so we can, okay. Just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Absolutely, no problem. Not you, though, Bernie, just, I'm just kidding. Anyone else care to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move now to recognitions. I'm delighted to introduce the Wittenhall dance team, who I got a chance to see the other night at the basketball game and actually in the news too recently. So who would like to do the recognition? Come forward.
Scott, you want to introduce them and?
You can bring up yours to the trophy. We'll let you hold it this time.
Wow.
I enjoy it. This is your trophy. So this is part of our 2014-2015 dance team. Did a really nice job making it all the way from regionals to the state competition. This is the first time in school history that we've placed up at state, taking fourth in the hip-hop division. It was kind of an interesting, quick story. Their outfits, if you've seen them perform, as Coach Meyer comes to me and asks me to order these safety vests and work pants and work boots, and I'm going, "Are we on the chain gang or are we on the dance team?" And they did a fantastic performance. They've had so many opportunities to perform in front of our home crowd here, and we're just proud to have that. And there's obviously a special spot in our trophy case for them, so we wish them the best as they continue. And certainly, congratulations on what they've accomplished this year for the school and for the community.
Would you like to do some, like, name, at least introduce yourselves?
So I'm Coach Meyer. I'm a high school special ed teacher here at Wittenhall. This is Amanda, and this is Abby, and Nicole. These are all, they're juniors. And then we have Caitlin, Maya, and Maddie, who are freshmen. And the rest of our team have other commitments tonight. There's 16 girls on the team, so.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Please join me in giving them one more round of applause. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Greenfield Park and Rec Awards. And I believe Dr. Holtz is gonna?
I will do that, and I will present this actually to our board president.
We go to the crowd.
This is the special service award. The night of the wine tasting, I went to the Greenfield Park and Rec special awards ceremony, and it was really nice. It was really long, but it was really outstanding, and they do a lot of recognitions of people. And they talked a lot about forward thinking. Mayor Mike brought us up there with Lisa and I and talked about the two high schools. It was overall a good program. But I wanted to, I received this from Scott for our school board, so I handed it to our board president. And then they also got a Wisconsin legislative commendation, and it's signed by Mary Lazic and Mike Kuglich for a special service award as well. And that's that.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone who made this possible. Thank you. That's very nice. Okay, next up, we have a consent agenda item. I would entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of a PPG math grants totaling $5,000. Before we approve that, I would ask, did anyone want to pull that out and have discussion about that item?
I'd like, just for a minute to?
Yeah, I would, okay. So we will not vote on a consent agenda. We'll vote on just this item. Go ahead.
I just wanted to pull it out because I really wanted to thank the high school teachers who took the time to put in the proposals in order for our school to receive these grants. And, well, I read it through a few days ago, but I know like one or two of them were going towards some kind of robotics club type, you know, activities to support their math classes or whatever they had planned for that for the high school. So I, you know, I just really appreciate when the teachers take the time to apply for these grants, and it really helps everything out. And it's kind of heading in that direction of trying to do more with robotics that I was kind of hoping that we'd be doing. So that's it. I just wanted to say thank you.
I would echo that sentiment. Anyone else have any other comments? On behalf of the entire board, we do want to thank our math team. Okay, I would entertain a motion then to approve the acceptance of the PPG math grants totaling $5,000.
Some moved.
Moved. All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we have on their new business, the Applied Population Study. And I'll let Dr. Holtz go ahead, and we have some guests here to help present. I will say as part of the introduction that we, as a district, as part of our facilities planning, really wanted to have not just a facilities planning, but really more about, it's more about our programming. We had a pretty good sense that the demographic community, while they might change, that our enrollment has been pretty steady. But we're glad to have some professional opinion report on that tonight as part of our long-range planning. And it also is very beneficial to the programs we're planning at all levels in our district. So that's my brief introduction. Would you like to add anything to that?
Yes. Not only do we have one researcher, we had two researchers from the department, David and Sarah. And the floor is all yours.
And do we need to speak into the microphone?
No, but he'll pick you up fine.
All right. Thanks for having us. I'm Sarah Kemp. I've been with the Applied Population Lab for 11 years and been responsible for the school enrollment projections program. We've been providing projections since 1996 to districts all around the state. And David has joined the Applied Population Lab two years ago, and he's become, he's gotten more involved in the school enrollment program. Prior to that, he was working at the state, doing the state projections, the population projections for the state of Wisconsin. So he's well-versed in projections, but he's new to school enrollment projections. So he's going to primarily give the presentation, and then we'll both take questions from him afterwards.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. I'll try not to have my back to you too much, so excuse me. You're looking at my back most of the time. Just to start with a clarification, we did a set of projections, completed that report in January, but then talked with Boal and some of the other staff people late last week and found out we wanted the projections done just for your resident students. So Sarah and I were able to go fast. We got on the hamster wheel, and we were able to rerun the projections just for your resident students. And that is the copy of the report that was accompanying your agenda. If you did, I'm not sure if you circulate the prior report or not. Okay, good, good. It should say February 2015 on the front, so. So just to let you know, we did, we're able to do that, and so the whole presentation and the report are about the resident students. So tonight's topics I want to cover, we'll go through some of the background of what we look at when we're preparing the set of projections, your resident enrollment history for the last 10 years, some other sort of demographic information, the age distribution of the whole population within the district, and how that has some effect on potential future enrollments, housing development in the area, focus a little bit on the kindergarten population and the births in the area, and how, if those are increasing or declining, and how those affect our work on projections. Then I'll talk briefly a little bit about the methodology. I won't get into too far into the weeds about the methodology, but just to describe it briefly of how we do these, and then finally wrap up with the actual projections themselves. So first thing we look at is what has been the district's enrollment history. And those were provided to us through the district office for the past 10 years, actually 11 years. And in this chart, I'm going to put up three lines. The first line is your total enrollment, so this includes your open enrollment students, your Chapter 220 students, and also the effect of 4K, which began in 2006 and '07. So overall, as you probably know, your student population in total has been fairly steady. And obviously, you've made a lot of use of open enrollment to help keep that steady the last few years as well as to bring it up a little bit. So this is the red line here is the total resident enrollment. So I've taken out the open enrollments and the Chapter 220s. And again, as you're probably well aware of the decline that's occurred over the years, even with the addition of 4K. And then to sort of give a really, you know, line that shows a sort of true comparison across all 10 years, this is the K to 12 resident enrollment. And as you can see, and I'm sure you've been keeping track of, is that your resident enrollment has fallen by about 300 students over the last 10 years, and a fairly steady drop. So another interesting thing about the Wittenhall district, and this is just kind of an informational slide, is you do have four private schools in the district. And those parochial schools have, I was a little surprised when I looked at them that they have quite a bit of enrollment themselves, and I'm not sure how much contact you have with the private schools, but, and they all go through grade eight. And so this shows here, the green line is the 5K to 8 resident population, student population in the Wittenhall district. And then this is just the data pulled together from the four private schools that are physically, you know, within the boundaries of your district. You know, we can't tell unfortunately, you know, where those students are actually resident, whether they're in the district or, of course, they could be living in an adjoining district in Greenfield or Franklin or even Milwaukee or so forth. So just a little information about the four parochial schools. And again, my grade grouping, we take a look at this too. This is your 4K. Again, slight rise as the program probably, you know, sort of ramps up and becomes more, parents become more aware of it, so that's grown slightly. This is your K through 5. Again, this is all resident data. So that's held fairly steady. And as we're looking at the numbers in particular, we're interested particularly in the more recent history, the last four or five years, where actually at K5, your resident students are actually increasing slightly. Things aren't quite so rosy at 6'8" and in the high school. We notice, this is the grade 6'8" resident totals, and that has fallen by about 25% over the 10-year time span. And the high schools, well, held up pretty well for a few years, but again, that's declined by about 200 students. They were again, close to 25%. So this is some, you know, background enrollment history that we look at. So the next two topics on district population and by age, and then housing development in the area. Again, this kind of, these two items are more, you know, they're served for our information as we're looking at the district, also for your information as well. They're not used in actively protecting the enrollments, but they give us, you know, they give us a sense of what's happening with the overall population. So the Wittenhall district, and the best sort of beginning and ending points right now are the actual decennial censuses that are done. Those give us the most accurate counts by age. If you can see up in the upper right here, the population of 2000 and the population 2010 for the district area only changed by 11 people, only went down by 11. And the latest estimate that comes from the Census Bureau, it's up about 150, so very minimal change across time over the last 14, 15 years. There's been quite a difference in the distribution of the population by age. So these are the figures at year 2000, and then I'll bring in year 2010. And I've broken these up into sort of 50 in your age ranges. So at the youngest age, preschool age up to 5, the district has, in terms of its under-5 population, it's been pretty constant. And that actually is sometimes kind of unusual when we look at other districts. We tend to see, you know, a drop in children of all ages. And then the age 5 to 19, this is about as close as we can get to, you know, approximating the school age population. In that decade between 2000 and 2010, went down about 400. People of that age were about 12%, and that's some of the effect you're seeing in your decline in terms of the resident enrollment. Young adults actually increased a little bit, and so that remains stable across the last decade. And then the 35 to 49 and 50 to 64, you'll notice you have a couple bars out, over 4,000 people. Well, these are just the baby boomers, those of us born between 1946 and '64. There's this, you know, big bulge in the population. And so it looks like a lot of change. I mean, obviously, the age distribution of the district is changing. It's mostly the same people, of course, they're just aging in place. So, but overall, for the sort of what we call middle age to older adults, 35 to 64, the population has practically been the same across that whole decade. And then finally, the 65 and older population in the district grew a little bit, about 10%. And again, that will obviously continue to grow as those of us in the baby boom generation, age beyond 65 and more. One thing that is interesting about the district is about 19% of your people are over 65, and that's kind of high compared to the state, which is about 14%. And Milwaukee County is only about 12%. All right, then, housing unit change? Well, of course, as you're probably well aware, not much has happened since the Great Recession, and the housing market's slowing down. These are total units. I had to sort of make some estimations because, you know, your district covers prior to Greenfield and prior to Franklin, and we can't, we can only get data based on the whole municipality. But I think these are fairly reasonable estimates of what happened in terms of new housing stock added every year. You had a couple of sort of peak years when some multifamily, I think, was put in in Hales Corners. But single family, as you can see, has been very small, only peaking at about 10 or 11 in one year. In the last couple of years, nothing in terms of new housing units have been reported. So kindergarten is next. And we do look closely at kindergarten enrollment. In fact, it underlies one of our projection methods I'll talk about in a little bit. And again, one thing we're looking at in particular, kindergarten enrollments, is that are they increasing in the recent past? And, you know, therefore, that will lead to greater enrollments in your, you know, first in your elementary grades, and then middle school grades, and then eventually, of course, in the high school grades. So the pattern, here's the last 10 years for your kindergarten enrollment. Again, this is all of those resident students. Little variability up and down, but generally, you can sort of, you know, just eyeballing it. You can see it is going somewhat up in numbers. And we do then apply a trend method, taking the whole 10 years of history and trending that out into the future. And then we take just a shorter period, like the last five years, to develop another trend pattern. And you can see about, we like to go out in five years. It's kind of a target point to look at. And you can see the enrollment currently, in the current year is 141. In about five years, it's in a range of sort of 144 to 147. So a little bit of growth, and obviously, as you go out further, a little bit more growth at your kindergarten level. So then, this is the final piece of background we look at, or how are births doing in the area? Are they growing or are they declining? And in the Wittenhall district, again, I'll put up the past history of, and actually, we go back even further. This is going back 18 years. So basically, we're saying, okay, everybody who's a senior now would have been born in the district back in 1996. So that's why we go all the way back here with this particular pattern. And there's quite a bit of bounce in recent years in the number of births in the area. But actually, one thing I should say, which differentiates this district from a lot of others in the state, is a lot of people after the recession saw their births really drop and decline. So actually, this is a positive thing as we start doing our projections forward, that you haven't had this period of four or five years where your number of births have actually fallen. And again, we do a couple trend lines going into the future to, you know, we create births that will then lead to the number of kindergarteners, you know, about five years later. And so we trend a line all the way through the birth, going back 18 years. And then in some of the techniques we use, we use a shorter birth trend. And this one shows a slight decline, but not terribly different. And actually, even when we get out to 2020, you know, the number of births here at 148 is higher than what it was in calendar year 2013. So those are sort of all the pieces we sort of juggle and look at to sort of, you know, get a sense of what the district's like, what it might look like in the short term going forward. And then we start doing the calculations and start using the methodology that we apply. And the primary method we use is something called the grade progression ratio. And I'm trying to illustrate this, I don't know how well this worked, but basically, we're looking at these diagonals, and we're looking at, okay, how many, for example, like here in 2013, '14, how many first graders did you have compared to kindergarten the prior year? And so we just take that as a ratio and calculate that. So you had about .978, so about 98% of your, if they were all the same students. You know, 98% that were in kindergarten the year before are now in first grade in the current year. So it is a little bit of an abstraction. I mean, we're not actually counting individual students. This is a, you know, we're looking for broad patterns here. But we calculate this ratio for each two-year pair, sort of going down the diagonals, and then we come up with averages for that particular grade. So for the K1 grade progression ratio, we come up with, I'll describe these three models at the bottom, the baseline, five-year trend, and two-year trend in a minute. Well, basically, it's not that difficult. Baseline, basically, we're using all of the ratios and averaging those, although we take out outliers, some that are too low or some that are too high. The five-year trend, we just look at the last five years of ratios, average those, and carry those forward. We don't make any exclusions there. And then the two-year trend is just the most recent activity of the last two years. We average that and use that in the model to go forward. So, and again, I should say, this is all excluding your open enrollment and excluding any Chapter 220 students. Let's see. So yeah, I sort of described briefly, this goes into more detail about each method. So the baseline model, we use that long-term trend that I showed on the kindergarten slide a few minutes ago. We use those nine previous years of grade progressions with some of the outliers removed. Then there's the five-year trend, where we use the recent trend line for kindergarteners and use the last five years of grade progression. And then the two-year trend, which again, we use the recent birth history to predict the kindergarteners. And the last two years are the only ones used to age students forward in the school district. We do actually have a fourth method. Each of these, these first three methods, we start with births and then trend to kindergarten age. But we also do a fourth method where we say, okay, let's just ignore how many births there were in the district area and just start with kindergarteners as our base point. So it's basically starting with a different base rather than starting with births. We start with kindergarteners and trend them forward. So by using four models, it's important to know we use four because then we come out with a range of likely outcomes for the enrollment. So we're not trying to come down to one specific, a single prediction or projection for the district. So you can sort of see a range of what might happen based on what's plausible. All right, and the grade progression ratios, so you can take a look at them. And these are all in the report as well. I just want to highlight some of them. So we've got the baseline projections, five-year trend, and the two-year trend. So basically, one area, you know, and I'm sure you're aware of this, with the private schools ending at grade eight, the district does, you know, pick up some students, obviously, from those private schools that enter, you know, enter the high school at grade nine. So you actually, you know, you gain about 10 to 15% of your students in grade nine compared to grade eight. And you can see, there's some variability in the lines here, particularly like the blue line, the two-year trend. You know, we're only using two years of ratios there, so there's going to be more volatility because you just don't have that, as many data points as you have in the other methods. But what is, you know, kind of nice to see is that, for the most part, these ratios are above one, which means, well, at least while I'm looking at it maybe as an administrator in facilities planning, you don't like it, but if it's above one, that means each succeeding class is slightly larger than the class before in general. That's us speaking in very general terms. Let's see, 4K, we actually do sort of a separate projection for 4K because, you know, you've had it for now nine years, so it's fairly well-established. But for a lot of districts, they've only had it for, you know, three, four, or five years at most. So because of those relatively short histories, we use a slightly different method. But it's actually pretty similar. We're still using sort of that birth concept of, you know, how many births occurred in the district, and then four years later, how many students are enrolled in 4K. And so we look at this, and we try to maintain some flexibility here because of the newness of the program. And sometimes the ratios rise really fast, or sometimes they don't, depends really on the district. But, you know, sort of as you look at these averages over here, in terms of the school districts are capturing in effect, you know, the number of births you had four years earlier, the 4K program is capturing about 64 to 69% of those births from four years previous. And again, that's kind of an abstraction. Obviously, people are moving in and out of the district. You know, families may be arriving with new kids, but it at least gives you a sense as you go forward of what the potential enrollment might be in the 4K program. Okay, I've gotten through the background and the methodologies, so let's actually look at the projections that come out. So these are for the entire district. Again, resident enrollment, so this is the history of the enrollment, which includes 4K here, which has shown that pattern the last 10 years of sort of downward decline. But all the projection models that we run, this is the baseline one, so this takes in the longest periods of data into account. And then this is the five-year trend and the two-year trend. So these take in shorter history, historical periods into account to do these projections. Um, and then the, uh, this is the kindergarten trend, um, which also shows a rise. So, sort of like three out of the four methods are showing, uh, actually kind of a reversal of fortune, I guess you'd say. Um, and, but, uh, where that's coming from is the fact that, you know, births in the area are holding steady pretty much now and, and, uh, we're projecting those to rise. You know, your kindergarten population has been rising kind of slowly, but it's still increasing, or has been increasing. That's been the pattern the last ten years. So that also is helping to, uh, boost future, you know, future projected students. And then we, you know, we, uh, break these down by the various, you know, elementary, middle school and high school groupings. Uh, this is the history for the two elementary schools in the area. You see, as I mentioned before, a little bit of a decline, but now a little bit of increase. And the four models going forward, uh, you see five years out, uh, there's a fairly wide range there of about a hundred and twenty or so. Um, so the overall, uh, the spread there is sort of at five years is, is sort of minus three percent to about eleven percent more, uh, in your elementary schools. And then as you go out further, we kind of like to sort of stop at five years, um, uh, or I should say, we, we have the most certainty about the projections within the first five years. In years six to ten, you know, we, we're carrying the models out, there's more uncertainty, obviously, uh, you know, sort of the children would figure into some of those numbers having been born yet. Um, so it's a little, you know, it, it's a little harder to predict and, and have as much confidence in sort of years six through ten. But it gives you sort of a long, long-range view of, of what might occur. That's the elementary ages, uh, middle school. Again, you've had sort of this gradual decline. Um, but again, because, um, at lower grades are seeing a little bit of an increase, uh, and then also, again, the births and kindergarten are looking fairly good here. Uh, you're getting, you know, slight increases as you go forward in time. Um, and the range at five years out is from four twenty-seven to four fifty-eight. Uh, so both of the, the entire range there actually shows a slight increase at the middle school level. And then finally, the, uh, uh, high school. Um, here's the experience of the last, uh, ten years. And again, for a few years, the, the models in general are showing a little bit of a drop, uh, particularly, you know, out to about year five, so it'll be twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, a little bit of a drop, about one percent to five percent, uh, lower than what it is in twenty fourteen, fifteen. Uh, but then, uh, you know, at least one of the models, um, the baseline one, which takes in the longer range trend, does show an increase back up over seven hundred, uh, when you get out to ten years. Um, uh, and the others are, are basically, you know, sort of, once you hit through that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty period, it's pretty much, uh, you know, it's indicating a fairly steady, uh, enrollment of resident students at the high school level. So just to sum up here, um, so what the, the trends, as I've mentioned as I've gone along here, is that, uh, you know, your resident enrollment's been declining, uh, by about three hundred students in the K through twelve, but your K to five resident enrollment has actually been holding steady and even increasing slightly in the last few years. Uh, and as I've been mentioning, the resident kindergarten enrollment has been, uh, higher in the past five years and it's been trending upwards. And your births, well, in, in the air, district area, while showing some volatility in recent years, has been trending upward in the district. So as, as I hope I've been able to highlight here, most of the models are showing some moderate growth in your resident enrollment, uh, over the next five years. Um, most, and then, most of them do, uh, predict larger gains from year six through ten. Again, we like to sort of caution people about reading too much into, uh, projections out, uh, beyond five years. Um, the elementary school resident enrollment is predicted, uh, to hold steady to about a ten percent increase over the next five years. Uh, middle school enrollment is showing the most gain, about five to the twelve percent. I think all the models there do show, uh, gains and then with larger gains out in the future. And then high school enrollment, as I mentioned, will still, uh, is projected still to be declining, but very modestly and then, uh, over the next five years. And then probably holding steady or maybe even rising a little bit beyond there. So that's everything we know.
Thank you.
And then, the open questions.
I wondered if we could do some sort of order to these questions? Because there's different chunks of this report, so maybe to try to coordinate or organize our questions, we could sort of start with each section, if that works out, or, or you want? Um, and the first section would be really about, um, the district enrollment history. And then the second section gets into kindergarten enrollment trends and birth trends and projections, and then it gets into the actual, what do you call them? The actual projections, correct? Did I sort of summarize it that way?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the actual school enrollment projections. So, um, maybe we could just start with the district history. Does anyone have questions about that particular section, about how they calculated it?
I do.
Go ahead.
You, you stated that we are aging in place. I found, I found that humorous.
(laughing).
Uh, they can sit in the chair.
Demographic term.
Right. And nineteen percent over, nineteen percent of our population is in the, over the baby boomer age group, is that?
Uh, yes, basically, um, right, at, at twenty-ten, baby boomers were roughly, uh, I'm counting myself in there, I'm trying to figure, about four, age forty-five to sixty-four, roughly?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're, and we're five percent higher than the average?
In the state, yeah.
State and in the, in, in city Milwaukee, you said, or county?
Milwaukee County is about twelve percent.
About twelve percent.
Again, obviously very heavily influenced by the city Milwaukee, which has, you know, more of an immigrant population, which helps, helps keep, you know, sort of the average age down in, in this, in, and the effect is because it's about two-thirds of the city, uh, two-thirds of the county. Um, the, the county age sixty-five and over is twelve percent.
So, with nineteen percent over the, the retirement age, basically, right? Can you, can you assume that, that housing stock will turn over in the near future?
Um, I guess, uh, I would, I would caution and, and, you know, we've, we've done some research on this, is that, um, while we can sort of, you know, imagine that and you hear anecdotal, um, evidence, obviously, beyond retirement, people might move up north and move to Arizona or Texas or, uh, you know, one of the Sunbelt states. Um, it, it takes a very long time for that transition to happen. Uh, you know, people may keep their house here and then just have a seasonal house somewhere else, uh, and they'll, they'll basically treat their house, you know, here in Hills Corners or Greenfield or Franklin as their primary residence.
So there's no factual base to that?
What's that?
There's no factual base to what I said?
Well, I-
I mean, obviously, a certain amount, a certain amount is going to turn over.
Yeah, right, I mean, right, and we all, uh, have that, but when you sort of look in the whole, uh, you know, scope of everyone, um, right, you'll, you'll have some older people, uh, retiring and maybe younger families moving in. Um, but it's, I, I want to be the best way to phrase this, is sort of, um, it, it takes a long time, it takes like decades for that to happen, for that transition to happen.
And it really is a, I mean, a lot of the research with the baby boom generation, how much did the recession affect people's decisions to, you know, to retire, to move? So, it is a, a really, I think, a big unknown nationally, how that's going to shift out as we go forward. And if the economy starts improving, you might, might see more movement, but it's really hard to predict at this stage.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the enrollment? I mean, we can always come back, I'm not trying to limit discussion at all here. I just wanted to mention too, that I thought that the recession, seeing how that affected the data was really interesting. Things I just never would have thought of in terms of, well, how it does affect, you know, birth and things like that. Wow.
Yeah.
That's really fascinating to me.
And, you know, common thing in Wisconsin, no matter what district we look at, you know, particularly like housing stock, you know, and, and as you're probably well aware from seeing housing going up in the early part of the two thousands and then two thousand six, seven comes along and housing construction just sort of came to an end. And so, we're still, I think, in a process of kind of absorbing all that excess housing stock, even now, you know, again, on eight, nine years after the start of the recession, so.
How accurate do you see the renter, um, and we have a lot of renter in the district, how accurate do you see those projections based on the census? How often do they report it?
Oh, like renter occupied?
Turnover, yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, there, we don't break those out and look at those separately, owner occupied versus renter occupied. Um, but, uh, data's available, um, well, was available at, you know, the twenty-ten census, uh, there is data that comes out, it's kind of like a five-year average through something called the American Community Survey, uh, for the district. Um, so that might show a little bit of change. Um, right now, the latest set, uh, came out for the years two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen. Um, so that might show a little bit.
But we didn't, but we didn't look it up for this report, that information.
Just from your perspective of what you've done in the past with other districts, I was just trying to get a-
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yes, so, um, typically, we see more children from single-family homes than multifamily homes. It, it does vary, of course, from district to district, and there are some that do have, um, more, um, more children from multifamily homes, but that tends to not be the case unless we, you know, see something different in the population, a very young population that maybe has lots of families. Um, but typically, it's older adults or younger adults who don't have children, so typically, it's not as much of an influence on enrollment, sing, um, multifamily homes.
Yeah, the only thing that sort of makes me question that though is recently with the recession, there are less, single, you know, single-family units and a lot more multis going up, so it could be that, that is changing.
It could, it could start changing, yeah.
Just, I mean, it just makes me wonder.
Though the last couple of years, you haven't seen a lot of development of multifamilies, but it could come, that could come, yeah, and it has happened in different places. They've built a lot more multifamily homes lately.
Seems like they're throwing off a lot of them in this, not in Hills Corners, but in our county. Just seems to me like that. Okay, um, did you have a question on this, Brian?
None of this topic.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on this part?
What are the four private schools in the area? I can only come up with three, and maybe my three aren't right.
You're probably forgetting the one Lutheran, St. John's, is that, over on, uh, horse?
St. Jacoby?
Huh?
St. Jacoby?
St. Jacoby.
I got you, St. Jacoby.
Oh, you did, okay.
St. Mary's, St. Jacoby, um, Hills Corners Lutheran, and what's the fourth?
Saint Matisse.
Saint Matisse.
Okay, yeah, I know there are three Catholic among Lutheran, yeah.
I don't think Saint Matisse is in our district.
Huh.
Just down from Edgerton, on the left, if, if you're heading towards one hundred and twenty-fourth, it does say there's a school at that church.
There is, there is one.
I can't, I can't think of the name right now.
I'm going to tell you, there is one, I hear them, the kids out there every day.
Oh, you're right, on the south side of the street.
There is a small school there.
Yeah, remember, yeah, there were three that have fairly large enrollments and then there was a fourth one that was very small.
Strong on Edgerton.
We, we don't know what it is, but it's off of Edgerton.
It's a Lutheran.
Okay.
A small Lutheran church back there. Mm-hmm. Cool. All right. So now we can kind of move to the birth and, and kindergarten enrollment trends. Any particular questions on that? It is what it is, right? It's actual birth.
And, and as David mentioned, the, that is unusual to have seen, your, there was a lot of volatility and up and down since the recession, but in general, it was an increase in trend and that's, um, been fairly rare in, in most places that we've worked with and, and these.
Okay.
I do have a question on this particular topic, uh, which I think is page eight on your report. In the first paragraph, you state that an estimate was developed to allocate shares of Franklin and Greenfield first to the district. Could you share with us what that estimate held? But that's such a small, uh, segment of the district, so what was your approach?
Yeah, um, right, yeah, the, obviously, Hills Corners is the main municipality in the district. Um, and I think, and, and Greenfield is what, like thirty-five thousand people total, and Franklin is kind of the same, I think thirty to thirty-five thousand. Um, what I was able to do was actually look at, um, how many people at the last, how many children at the last census were, were reported at age zero to one. Um, and I was able to get the, the census, uh, census geographies to fit pretty close to the school district geography and, um, able to come up, come up with in, in that part of Greenfield and that part of Franklin that are in this district, um, a, a rough, uh, a fairly good count of how many like zero-to-one-year-olds are there were. So that sort of gave me a proxy of how many children were born, uh, a year previous to the census. Um, so, and so with any, each of those larger municipalities, it's just basically a proportional, uh, method that was used.
Okay. All right, um, you know what, um, I'm not meaning to ignore our administrators. Do you guys have any questions up to this point? I apologize if I'm not asking you sooner. You just raise your hand, yeah, all right? All right, um, population trends? Well, population trends then. No other comments on the birth? Okay. All right, population trends. Does anyone have questions on, this is the, like the, a big part of it? Questions, anyone on the population trends?
Well, our five to ten-year range, we are trending up a fair amount. And obviously, you don't want us to put a, put much credence in that, because it's too far out, right?
Uh, yeah, it, it, it is a case, I don't know, sir, we want to speak more to your feelings or what previously has been looked at.
Yes, Dave, as David mentioned, um, five years out, we're, we're projecting future kindergarteners on actual births. And from six to ten years out, those are projected births, projecting kindergarteners. So they're less reliable because it's a projection versus an actual. So that's, so that's why we always caution, it gives you, as David mentioned, a, a general trend of if, if this trend continues ten years out, this is what you might expect, but it's not as reliable.
And in the next two years, we're going to see a decrease before it starts trending up, correct?
A slight, I think it was slightly, for the, are you talking about overall, the district total?
Yeah, overall.
Versus one of the grade groupings? Yeah, let, next year for sure, probably pretty flat yet, but going forward, the next one or two years, you won't, yeah, yeah.
Flat and then start trending up?
Yeah, then start trending.
And that, that should be pretty real-life data, right?
It should be, yes. For next year, you should, um, these should be fairly reliable, that we, we typically have a one to three percent error rate with districts the first one to even three years out.
That was my, the other question, I don't know if it's in this one, but do you go back and check your projections and see how you did?
It depends on the district. Many of our districts, we do projections either annually or every two to three years, and so I always, uh, provide, um, some analysis of, of how the projections have fared. So, so at least, I haven't done all of them, but the ones that I do work with regularly, I, yes. That's why I can say that with confidence with most districts, that's, tends to be the case.
And you, do you, are you pretty accurate up to your five-year trends?
Yeah, and, and they, they get less reliable further out, you know, so, and, and if you have a smaller district or the numbers are smaller, they're also a little bit higher error rate than if you have a school of ten thousand students, then the error rate tends to be a lot smaller, because you're dealing with larger numbers. But overall, um, yeah, we typically up through that three to four years for sure, we're, we're about one, you know, one to three. I haven't looked lately at five years out for a lot of the districts that we work with, but.
Good, thank you.
I guess I just have a comment observation. So we were looking at, um, on page eighteen, we were looking at the baseline projection by grade levels, and so-
Why don't we hold that conversation?
Oh, we're not there yet?
Let's just do the population.
Oh, we're just still on population?
And then, yeah, then we'll go to the projections. So hold that thought.
Oh, I thought we were already doing that. That was my question, I thought, was that your question?
I think, I think it kind of blended into that a little bit.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question directly related to population trends, which I think is-
I'd have you too, but go ahead.
Um, how did you account for the lack of housing, uh, new housing stock within the district? Um, in terms of, you know, presidential construction, availability- In terms of presidential construction, availability, development, is that variable accounted for in the population trend?
It is not. In, in these particular models, we have done housing models in the past, but none of these models take into consideration any housing component.
Thank you.
I'm confused about that. We did look at housing starts.
Right, so we provide, that's really just background information for you to see what your housing starts have been the last 10 years, but there aren't any assumptions built into any of the four models that say, well, because you've had this many houses, this is how many students you might expect from those new homes, those, that's not calculated in at all.
Good to know, because I would look at Hales Corners and say, we're so landlocked, you know, it seems like there aren't, there's a lot of, you shouldn't be planning for future growth in Hales Corners based on green space. There's-
Well, there is a little bit in Greenfield, there's some Winter Garden, Winter Glen, and now these condominiums are going up on, just off of Highway 100 and, what is it, Leighton, just, just north of Leighton.
So there might be some of that, yeah, but that's not calculated in. Okay. All right, how about in the back row, there any questions? No? You've got it all down, good.
Let me, so with very little possible new construction territory in our district, these numbers should hold relatively-
There definitely will be, yeah, very little influence from, from homes. It'll be more in terms of housing turnover, as you talked about earlier.
Or more pregnancies.
Or more pregnancies.
Did he have?
No more, no more recessions. Okay, um, so we'll move right into the last section, then the methodology and the top school enrollment projections that kind of, kind of go together. Specific questions on the projections and what you saw in the data?
I think this is where I was, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You go.
So, actually, it was kind of interesting, going into this, I think we were all kind of focused on the elementary level, and so it was kind of surprising to me to see that the trend is going up, you know, you know, stable or going, you know, actually going up, but I guess what maybe will be a future discussion is, would concern me, is the trending down at the high school level. And looking at, you know, we're always talking about wanting to build up to 800 at the high school and 200 per grades, and, you know, obviously, to do that at the high school level when we're trending down is going only, if we really are looking to think we're gonna do this 200, is going to be open enrollment, or we need to rethink where we're going with the high school. So, I thought it was kind of interesting, because I think initially, you know, obviously the focus was, let's make sure we're doing the right thing at the elementary level, but I'm thinking that down the line, we're gonna need to have a, a little bit of discussion how the high school, how this is gonna play out at the high school, if this trend, trending down goes, so, that was, um, let's see. That was like, like one of my strengths.
But wouldn't, wouldn't you be able to assume that if we're, if we're trending up in the K5 area, that ultimately, that's gonna-
Well, they factor that in there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, but, you know, but at K5, you're not looking at 200 per, you know, per, you know, we're, we need to add at the middle school or the high school to get up to 200, because if you have, whatever the math is, seven, seven sections at 25 is not gonna get you 200, so we've always had, you can't count on just that, you can't count on just what we get at the elementary level to build into our high school. We always have to get some of the parochial back, and we've been having to add open enrollment to get to that number, so.
Comments on that? Did she get that off?
Yeah, right, and then, you know, you're seeing that decline because of those middle school students now that are progressing to the high school, you would expect to see that decline, because we're progressing those students and they're getting older, and so, you know, that middle school influence is, is strong in the next couple of years.
Okay, questions? I did, I did have one, I'm, I like all the, appreciate all the different ways you can run these models, and that they give you sort of different pictures. Why the two-year one, though? I just think that's, why do you even put that in there? It seems like the most risky picture, or is it not?
It really does stand out a lot, that two-year trend compared to the other models, and, and so that's why in the report, we cautioned you about it for a couple of reasons. One, as David mentioned, it's just looking at two years of grade progression ratios, so it's a little uncertain, is this now, is this just something that occurred in the last two years, that's just this little blip that's happening, or is this now gonna be a trend going forward, and at this stage in the game, it's hard to say that that's the case or not. So if you looked at sort of those grade progress ratios, many of the gray, you know, each of those pairs, they're, they're very, many of them are lower than the baseline or the five-year, so, um, so I'm not, I'm not sure I can say, it's, it's a model to be cautious of, and it's not necessarily going to happen, but it's something you should watch to see as you're going forward, are, do your numbers start increasing or may not? But because the other models are all, because a big part, you know, the fact that your kindergarteners and your births have increased, I think that's really gonna influence enrollment more than these other grades that seem to have dropped a bit the last couple of years.
Okay, so, that's really interesting, we're looking at actual birth rates, if I'm understanding this all correctly, we're at, actual birth rates, we're looking at actual population growth over time, and we're looking at progression rates, which might take, take into account students who have left the school district at some point, or students who might have come in, which is why you're seeing the up and down, below one and above one and below one.
Right.
Which is another very sophisticated number.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, so they're, they're both an influence.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, those are my comments, anyone else have comments?
So, you know, Governor Walker keeps talking about the school choice program, and if that goes through, how will, if, if at all, how will that change your way that you do these studies?
I've been thinking a lot about that, because it's a really big unknown at this point, as that choice program opens up statewide, it's a very good question, I've, I've been pondering it a lot the last couple of weeks, but I don't have an answer for you at this point.
Well, how would that be different than open enrollment at this, right now? In terms of projection plan?
Well, if, if, if-
For districts like ours that-
If public students choose to move to private schools and take advantage of the funding that's gonna be allowed for public students to go to private schools, yeah, it's, it's a tricky one. But the open enrollment program, that's totally different, I mean, that's within the public school system, and so I don't think that's going to change, though he has proposed to eliminate the 220 program.
Okay. I was kind of thinking in our district, because we have so many students already that go to the pri, you know, like, you know, we saw that there was, because we have four and we have a significant amount, that we're kind of maybe steady there, I don't know if they're at capacity, I don't know how much that's gonna affect, like, our district, especially if they put the, the dollar cap on.
At the state level?
At the state level, yeah, I was just trying, I was thinking that through, too.
There's a lot of unknowns, yeah, exactly. Bernie?
I mean, it kind of dovetails with Nancy said, it's, is these potentially catastrophic, catastrophic events that you can't predict, school choice being one, I'll throw on another one, a very large increase in property taxes, you know, so it's these variables that, you know, you're looking at data from the past to do projections, I appreciate that, you're statisticians, that's what you do, you know, but you can't account for these events, you can't account for a downturn in the economy we had in 2008, you can't account for tightening of mortgage standards that occurred over the last three or four years, you know, I appreciate that, and it makes your job very difficult, but when you're making, you know, budget decisions and expenditure decisions, I think we need to really look at those variables, so it's more of a comment than a question. Here's the question, is what is your confidence level at the two-year, the five-year, and the 10-year projection? Is it 90% at two years, is it 95, 80, any idea?
Well, as I mentioned before, our, I mean, we, we tend to see the first three years a 1% to 3% error rate within those numbers, whatever those numbers are, it's that, it's a percentage, and so, I, I, again, I don't have a percent to give you five years and 10 years, but just other than it's much less reliable 10 years out because of those projected births.
Okay, I have a question for the back row. Maybe we could sort of go down and you could each, is there, what have you seen in the data when you look at it, maybe how are you gonna use, what do you see that's helpful to you? Would anyone back there like to sort of share with the board what you're seeing in this, in your comments?
Well, I, I just want to say that school choice numbers that are set, caps that are set for income, and I, I know what I'm talking about here, because my child is in a public school or private school system, so I know what they, the paperwork states, and you really need to make significant, or have a, have a household with significant financial need to really be able to access the school choice dollars. So, I think that while some, some families might be able to take that opportunity or choice dollars, many won't be eligible for it, and then they also will be needing to provide transportation to get to those locations, so just like open enrollment brings in, you know, families, they have to have the transportation piece, so I know it's gonna be a component that some folks will look at and wonder about and research, but I don't know that we'll have vast numbers, you know, driving over to other locations because of school choice dollars, frankly, if the numbers and the dollars stay as they are right now. And anyone can look those, those amounts up on, you know, the financial, they're out there right now, so they can take a look and see.
Forty thousand, forty-four thousand.
Actual numbers of-
Oh, yeah.
You know, family size and income and all the rest. But, I mean, in regards to like elementary trend, this, these numbers feel like, yeah, I, I agree, that's what we're living, you know, that's what we're seeing. I'm interested in the K4 numbers, because those are students who don't receive transportation, and that's part of our program, that's a little maybe different than the rest of the school district, K5 up, so I would, it's, it's good to know, because that's pretty much what we see in regards to like, how many kids enroll in as K4, and then we get seemingly about like another set of numbers that probably adds us up to the K5 number, so it seems like that's, those feel really accurate, that seems like what we've been kind of building off of, so, and the whole blip and trend piece, that's, that's the part that we talk about with K4, we're never quite sure why there's just been a banner year one year, and we just, you know, didn't know why, perhaps, so, it's nice to have the numbers to go behind what we've been living, so to speak.
Chris?
I think Lori stated what I was thinking all along, which is, this seems to be exactly what we've been noticing and expecting to see. My one question is, when you looked at parochial and private, that was all, that was the students that were going to that school, and you were not disaggregating from where they're coming from, is that correct? You can't say that?
No, yeah, but, you know, there's no underlying data set, at least that we have access to, that would show, you know, were they coming from the city of Franklin, or the city of Greenfield, or Los Angeles, or wherever.
I'm sorry, so we're not exactly sure about our attendance area kids, and if they're going to private parochial, or if they're sticking with us in our, well.
But didn't we know, though, that about, I'm saying, six, wasn't that number like 26 of the birth kids going into our K4 program?
Yeah, that was the-
Right.
So, we're not sure-
Sixty-four to sixty-eight percent.
Sixty-four to sixty-eight percent.
Right, so, I'm not sure that you can make any assumptions from that, but it does tell us that not all the kids born here stay here, or go into that program.
I'm sorry, a number of families, you have to, have to go into our-
Not to do K4, right.
They stay in a daycare option, they stay with grandma, or grandpa, or some near childcare, or, or they, you know, you know, they, some of them do go elsewhere, but then we get them, we get them once our transportation begins.
Right, okay. Lynn, anything you'd like to add?
No, I agree with Lori, Chris.
Joel? Dennis, anything on this? Jackie, those high school numbers, any comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, since I've been at the high school, like, you know, we've, I've firsthand witnessed the decline, but, you know, we've been maintaining through open enrollment, and we do gain back a lot of students from, you know, parochial that come back in, in high school, so, it's well, what we've seen.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I can add is that I, I see the gap in, like, the select sports, those kids that might live in the district, attend maybe another school like Pius or something, and then, but they're in our gymnasiums, they're on our football fields, you know, there, there's a lot more people there for we to use nighttime in our schools than, you know, what we've overseen like during a regular football game, you know, just that you basketball tournament we had this weekend.
All right. If you want to summarize this all up, how do you think this is all gonna help us?
You get the last word.
First of all, I really appreciate all the effort and the time you put into it, and the rationale behind it. I also appreciate everything that was said, whether it was from Bernie, or Nancy, or Quinn, it's really hard to predict what's gonna happen five years from now, whether it's something catastrophic, whether it's some, you know, recessions, the economy, taxes, it, it's hard to really go out that way. What I, my takeaway from this is, our enrollment has been, I mean, it declined, but it's, it's been leveling off, and it looks like it's gonna stay pretty consistent if these things hold true, and, you know, we've been using open enrollment to get the dips, because we expect them to come back up, so we'll have some grade levels with higher numbers of open enrollment and some with less. If the enrollment grows, obviously, you, you delete the number of open enrollment, so that when we do build our buildings, we're building them for the students that we have now and that will have 10 years from now, and if your projections are true, we decrease the number of open enrollment students as we head towards that 10-year timeframe out. And I certainly understand the difficulty with the high school, mostly because you can look at kindergarten kids, but it's, it's such a long time before they get to that high school, and who knows what's gonna happen politically or any other way over the next 10 years, but positioning yourself with a successful district, especially a community school district, I think is always a strong point when parents look for schools, so, thank you very much for the information.
I'll just add, too, that we had hoped to get this information, we had an ambitious timeline by the end of December or early January, and for all these other reasons, we didn't get it till now, but that was our intent before we made our final decision on the facilities, however, this is still a really helpful toss, and we know, I feel more confident that we're going in the right direction with all of our planning, right? All of our planning, so, thank you again, and I'm glad you have good weather to go back with.
Yeah, Sarah, you have a safe trip, because I know you have, and he said you might be staying closer.
I am staying close.
But she lives in far northern Wisconsin.
I live far away, but I am staying close.
Oh, well, great, well, thank you, Lynn, thank you, safe travels.
Can I ask one other quick question? You suggested that you go back with other districts, your, every one year, two years, how often, what do you recommend?
So, typically, a district, on average, most of them, three to five years.
Okay.
Yeah, that's to be the, the standard, if, if you're not interested in them on an annual basis, three to five is, is a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
There were some slides up that were in the packet.
I can, between Kathy and I, we can get them.
Give it up on the public website.
Yeah, and it was the same data, just kind of displayed differently, but reformatted, more visually.
Could you, you could email me the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And then I can print out that.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll have committee reports, and I think we do have personnel.
Yes, we met, um, I don't know, last week, I think. We, basically, we talked about three things, we talked about health insurance and what changes that might be made for the upcoming year, and so Doug was working with our insurance consultant and getting some information, which we'll bring back to our next meeting, which is the first Monday in March. We also talked about the current retiree accounts and how we could- and how we could eliminate some of that work off of our business office staff, and there was a suggestion from, I think from our attorney, that maybe we look at a third-party administrator to administer these accounts. So, Doug's going to get some information on that and bring that back to the next personnel committee. And then the last one, we talked briefly about the teacher compensation, about the compensation committee, and some of the things that they've talked about. Basically, the goal is to get the beginning salaries up, and by doing that, hiring teachers at the beginning level, we currently have teachers that would be below that level. So, how will we get those teachers up above that as well? And so, again, plan will be brought to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Was there a policy?
No, there wasn't, but we will be having one probably mid to late February.
Okay, and we have no finance and facilities to report, I don't believe?
No, there's a meeting next week.
There's a meeting next week, okay.
Monday.
All right, hopefully Stephanie's feeling better by then. She's been ill. Now, we have the superintendent's report.
Well, I get to do the fun stuff. First, my, our fifth graders from Hills Corners and a lot of parents, even a couple of our board members, went to JA Biz Town at the Coles Education Center. It was fascinating. It was fun to watch the fifth graders in action. It was a great educational experience for kids because they go through different scenarios as part of a community, you know, whether it's writing checks, using debit cards, writing things for the newspaper. And like I said, it's very impressive because of the amount of volunteers you have to have to the amount of kids going through. So, the ladies at Hills Corners did an excellent job lining up the volunteers and getting help. And we hope to have a few of our students do a brief presentation in one of our future board meetings because it would be a lot more informative and entertainment than hearing me talk about it. So, district-wide lockdown drill. On Wednesday last week, we had our first district-wide lockdown drill, which utilized our new phone systems. There were some glitches which we're addressing, which is why we did the practice. But what's impressive is we're, we're taking the ability to, to do lockdowns to the next level where we can do it out over the entire speaker, all the speakers in the entire district if we ever need to, or we can isolate it by building. And it's, a lot of it has to do with the new phone systems that the board put in a short time ago, within last year. Forward Thinking and Career Summit. Last Monday morning, we had our Forward Thinking meeting, and then we went into a meeting about the Career Summit. Greenfield, a couple of Greenfield School Board members, Rick Mose, and who was the other one that was doing it?
Russ Bond.
Russ.
Russ Bond, Russ, okay, I forget Russ. Suggested we look at, we're looking at a date in September, and we'll probably hold the event at M A T C's South Campus in Oak Creek. The M A T C team was at our meeting and seemed very excited to work with us on the initiative. So, that's very positive.
Do they, well, do you think they, you and I, like, some of us were at that meeting, not everybody's there, so maybe not everybody knows what that explore, your future, kind of entails.
Well, it's, it's, it's exposing our kids to different opportunities that they have as they move on through high school and out of high school into whether it's a, a two-year college, two-year technical school, four-year university, but there's different pathways. And they, we want them to be exposed to different pathways and, and get a flavor for it and see, you know, what they read about when they were in kindergarten and first grade as to what this person does for a living is much different than what it is now, ten years, fifteen years later. So, it'll be very interesting and informative for all of our kids. Last but not least, the Whittanell Musical Once on This Island, the tickets for the musical are on sale now. Tom tells me the show will be full of energy, dancing, singing, and more, which I would be amazed if it wasn't. Info about the show and the senior dinner show on March eighteenth will be included in the Viewpoint, which went out already and should be coming to mailboxes soon. Right, Dave?
A week from today.
A week from today. And will start appearing on our websites and social media outlets. So, and that is a very family-friendly musical, and it's, I think it's, Skylight is, has.
Isn't it amazing? It's, I, I, I had this wrote to my wife yesterday. I said, is that the same play we're doing at the high school?
Yes.
It is.
Tom's on it. It's not amazing.
I was amazed at that.
He just knows what's happening.
Right in the journal, a nice colorful ad, and I'm like, I think that's the name of it.
Matter of fact, our kids that are in the play are going to see the play tomorrow night, I believe. So, that, they're going to have a lot of fun. Oh, and then our one young lady from Hills Corners, she is also going to be going along. So, it should be fun. And that's my superintendent's report.
Good stuff happening. Thank you. How about our referendum update?
Sure. Things are going along just as planned. You guys may have seen a lot of the different pieces of information that we've been able to share in the last week or since, I think it was two weeks ago since we were last here given the plan. Fact sheets are done and available for anybody who wants them to hand out, and they're going to be available at all events between now and April seventh. If we run out, we can certainly get more, so don't be shy handing them out. The calendar of events has been put together, and I know people have been signing up to attend those events, a lot of board members, administrators. We have as many events that I was aware of between now and April seventh on the calendar, and there's quite a few. And again, we'll have the fact sheets available at all those events, whether or not someone is there to hand them out, or they'll just be available at a table, you know, whatever works for everybody's schedule. The boards came in today. I don't know if you saw it on your way in, but those boards will be up at all the schools, at all three libraries, Hills Corners Village Hall, Greenfield City Hall, and the community, the Greenfield Community Center, and I think I'm missing one other place. But we have about a dozen boards. One will be like a traveling board that goes with us when we do presentations. Just some information shows the site plan, the preliminary site plan, the preliminary floor plan for the pool, and tells a little bit about what's on, about each question that's going to be on the, on the ballot in April. So, those just came in today, and those will be distributed tomorrow throughout the community and to all of our schools. The website went live about two weeks ago, but I didn't really share a lot of that information yet because I was still building it, but I wanted to get something up there. On all the sites, there is this, we call it a badge or icon. If you click there, it'll take you to the main screen that, or the main page that has a lot of the information that we talked about two weeks ago. We're starting to fill in all those details. This is basically the fact sheet just printed out. The fact sheet before it got abbreviated a little bit to fit, to fit the space. And then alongside, alongside, there's all different tabs, press releases that we put out, any news coverage that we receive, information opportunities, which that schedule I just sent to non-newspapers today. I can get you a copy of those dates, but we did set the dates for the tours. We set the dates for the information nights. We set the dates for the open door sessions. All those have been locked in. They are on this page, and like I said, they're, they are on, on other locations on the website as well. Information about the community survey that we put out this year, including the report that was provided to us from school perceptions, the floor plans, or preliminary site plans, preliminary school plan are there. There's an opportunity for individuals to submit a question. Those questions come directly to me. So far, no one's asked me a question, but they can. This is the actual question, the actual, what the ballot will look like, so people can get familiar with the information in advance of April seventh, so they're not confused when they sit down and read it that day. So, it's there. Some voter information is available on our site as well, links to the G A B, and just some other little details mentioning. And it, and as you go out and tell people and ask them to vote, or remind them to vote, you should also remind them that April seventh falls during our spring break. So, they might have plans to be out of town, so maybe you want to suggest to them to vote early or absentee because April seventh is right in the middle of our spring break.
And is there information there as to how to do that?
How to do that?
Yes. These links take you right to a ballot that you can download, an absentee ballot, and they also, there's also the information for all the clerk's offices in the three districts, or the three municipalities.
What about early?
Early voting is open, it says right here, March twenty-third, three to third, and that is something that you should check with your clerk's office to make sure that, you know, check with their hours and stuff, because I don't have all that information yet. So, and they're all.
You get it and put it up there for us?
Well, it's really just whenever they're open, I, I could certainly try to get more information.
That would be helpful.
And do you know, other than the school board race, referendum, there's just, is there?
Supreme Court?
Supreme Court, no, yeah, Wisconsin State.
There's no other local election, so I think all the aldermen in Greenfield are running unopposed.
Right.
There might be a village, there might be a village trustee, I think, maybe one, I'm not entirely sure. But there is no other, Greenfield doesn't have any, well, you wouldn't have been voting for Greenfield, but there's my school board election there. So, I don't know what kind of turnout there will be because there isn't a whole lot on, on the ballot. So, anyway, that's what the website looks like right now. Filled with information. Let me go through real quick the rest of what's going on. Dr. Holtz and I will be going to staff meetings at all four schools in the next about week or ten days to hand deliver fact sheets and the, the do's and don'ts sheets, and kind of just tell them what, tell teachers and staff what their role can be during this next couple of weeks. We're putting together a frequently asked questions list, which is still a work in progress, but it'll be on the site soon. There'll be another link, well, there is a link right there, but it's blank. And that'll just be a running tab of any questions. So, if you guys receive any questions that you get more than once, or even just once that you want, and you think it's a good question that should be answered, send it my way, and we can come up with the proper answer, and we can add it to this list so that it's something that, if someone else has it, you can, you'll know the answer to it, or we can just direct people to the frequently asked questions. Special newsletter, the viewpoint like Dr. Holtz was talking about is coming out, it's at the printer now. It's going to be mailed either Thursday or Friday and should start being, showing up in mailboxes on Monday. That has a lot of referendum information, but we have a special newsletter that'll be coming out several weeks after that, and we're starting to build the content for that one now. So, that'll be another mailing that goes out, and then even further down the line, there'll be another mailing, which is a postcard, and that will kind of give more information about the absentee opportunity and voting early and that sort of thing to make sure that people get a chance to vote before, before they leave.
What, other than the viewpoint, what other mailings, or how are we reaching residents that are not parents?
Viewpoint goes to everyone.
Well, viewpoint goes there.
Other than that?
Well, I just said, I just said there's three mailings. So, the viewpoint, which comes out on Monday, and then the second newsletter is going to be a district-wide mailing, and then the postcard will be a third district-wide mailing. So, there'll be three within five or six weeks of each other. And in addition, we've sent news, a news release to now newspapers announcing all the information nights that we have, and hopefully they run that for the next several weeks. Those nights aren't until early in mid-March, so hopefully they keep running that and we'll reach that audience there. We also have our social media tools, which we'll be using. We just started using this week, late last week and early this week, well, today's only Monday, so, but we're going to be using those tools as well to reach that audience because there is quite a big audience on our social media sites that, you know, are parents.
Do you know that?
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, we have almost fifteen hundred people on Facebook alone, and I can't imagine they're all current parents. So, I think there are a lot of alumni that are on there. I mean, I don't know all of them personally, obviously, but I, I would, I would say that they, I would guess that they're not all parents. So, there is that audience that we're reaching to.
I do want to tag onto that about how we're reaching out, though. We are going to, Lynn and I are going to try to get to a couple of the senior centers that we had talked to during Forward Thinking, and I believe if someone contacting municipalities, because I had talked about, let's get to all three municipalities and talk to their boards and try to get on their agendas. And that's not a lot of time to do that. So, is someone working on that? I think that's another way we need to reach out?
That was one of my last questions in the email.
Okay, cool. And then.
But I can see, I can catch both those guys anytime.
Yeah. Well, we need to get a formal presentation scheduled before those boards, and that's hard to get.
I don't know. I mean, we could do that. I don't know how much, I mean, their meetings are as attended as ours are.
Yeah.
I mean, so I don't know that we'd be reaching that big of an audience.
Well, maybe for sure Hills Corners would be the one, then, if you don't fit to.
Possibly. I've never been to Hills Corners trustee meetings. I don't know what they're like, but I've been to dozens upon dozens of city hall, or meetings at city hall, and they're like this. So, I don't know what a form, I don't know.
What are you trying to say, dude?
I don't know, I don't know how important a formal presentation would be at, at the meetings. I think it's.
Maybe we'll bring the dance team.
And reaching out to, we are reaching out to the civic groups. I know Dr. Holtz spoke in front of the chamber.
Rotary, Lions, Chamber, yeah.
So, those are groups that we will be reaching out to and getting on their schedules.
Go ahead, sorry.
And last thing, we are looking at putting together some informational videos about the facilities and some of the issues that we have at Hills Corners and the issues that we have here. So, those will be available, and we'll be having those on YouTube and our social media sites, and those will be a valuable tool to share more information as well.
And on the website? Because I, I mean, there's no pictures of the locker room, and we need pictures. If not, I think in addition to the videos, we need some of the, there's, you know, where you go down and there's like three projects. So, if we could get just some more pictures in there.
Sure.
For maybe people who aren't YouTubers, and get the pictures of those locker rooms where there's problems, that would really be helpful. I know you have one of the curtain wall, and you've got some of Hills Corners. That's all good. There's just nothing that really highlights the pool.
The, the next newsletter that comes out will be more visually based versus the one that came out, or that's coming out Monday, so there will be more photos in there.
But can you add them to the website there?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I can, I can find a spot for them, for sure.
I mean, that's all really wonderful. That was the only thing that already I couldn't show someone. I'm like, well, it's probably right here. Oops, it's not right here, to show them that picture.
Well, I liked when I talked to some of the K four parents. There were a couple that had actually gone through Hills Corners Elementary and through the high school.
That's cool.
And they were like, oh, yeah, those locker rooms are the original. Oh, yeah, yeah. See, you need to, so, yeah, the pictures of locker room, I think, would help. Because I think we forget about that part of it, and that obviously adds to the cost of that project.
Right.
I think it would be helpful if we had some students doing the YouTube videos about the pool and the locker rooms and things like that, and talk about their horrible experience with them, and I know that that may be something better than just having, you know, an adult talk about it.
Sure.
Even with children at Hills Corners Elementary, some of the difficulties in that building, every time I go tour it, I'm like, oh, man, if I probably knew about this, they would probably understand why we're trying to fix it. So, I would, I would add that. Any, Jonathan, did you have any questions or comments? You're good. I just had, let's see, what else I can, oh, I think it would be helpful to, don't be afraid to shoot us an email once in a while, even if it's on a Monday. I think we kind of wanted a regular update on events coming up. But if you need someone and no one has signed up, if you, if you just shoot us an email and say, need help, in the subject line, maybe we could respond to that quickly to get someone there. I hate to have us miss an event. There's, I'm trying to schedule at least one a week, that, you know, I know we're all busy.
I thought the updates are coming on Thursdays, so when do you want the updates?
Yeah, I'm just saying if you get, no, whatever day, that's fine.
Well, the one nice thing about the schedule is that you all can look at it, and it's all available. I, we shared it with everybody, so if no one signed up for it, it's good to go, then that means jump in there and be there.
And where is it? Where is it located?
What's that?
Where is it located?
It's, there is a link to it on the, on the board only site. You can't edit that one. You can only edit the, the one that I shared with you, but you can view it. It updates in real time, so.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, Dave. Not everyone's as proficient as that.
It updates in real time?
It does.
Within five minutes.
Google Docs does that.
That's real time.
But if you need people, what I'm suggesting is don't rely on us to be going in there every day checking it. We're not. I can, I don't have that kind of time. But if you need someone and you shoot us a quick email that says, need coverage, this, this, and we have no coverage, don't you think that would be helpful, even if you're in checking it? I mean, maybe no one can get it, but if I know no one can make that one, I might jump in there some night, you know?
Okay.
I don't know.
When would you like that update?
I think, I think though, I mean, if you're saying that you don't have time to go and look, you're saying that David has time to go every day and send an email to everybody saying, oh, by the way, this is all out here. Nobody's checked. Can you do it again?
Yeah. Well, not every day maybe, but on urgent things where we really don't have coverage and we should have someone. I understand you're not going to be at every basketball game or whatever. Every, we can't be at every event, but on the big ones, I think, if you really think you need us, let us know. That's all I'm suggesting.
I need you at every event.
That's what I thought.
And don't panic, like, if, I'm, I'm only doing kind of a week at a time here, so don't panic if you've got like two, three weeks out, you know? For example, I'm just kind of like finding a schedule.
Yeah, me too. It's hard to look out.
Okay.
Some of those I grabbed.
So, it's still not clear when you want me to send an update to everybody?
When you, when you need them.
When you need us.
When I need you.
If you need us every day, send.
Okay.
I'm not saying a formal report. I'm just saying.
No, no, right.
A quick email.
Well, here's the link. We need help. Well, here's the link, we need help.
Very good.
Here's the link.
No, no, we need, we need help.
I have to go back and look.
Tuesday night at seven.
Tuesday night at seven.
Anybody do it, it's Monday at seven.
Right, that'd be really great.
Okay.
I mean, we're trying to help, I'm not, trying to make your life more difficult.
That's my job, right, Dave?
Yeah, you make his life more difficult. Okay, any other comments on the referendum update, I just thank you so much for all the work and for all our administrators as well, I realize this is work for all of you. Trying to get the word out and, and letting our staff know what's going on, so thank you for that. Okay, uh, next up, we have district goals uh progress report. I do, backing up for a second, uh, Lowell and I did attend the chamber meeting in Greenfield as part of our referendum update and it was really, it's great to be part of this now and to be handing things out. It's like, we're not talking about it anymore, we actually are handing stuff out and getting to events, so, we got one done, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, we're gonna start with goal number one then. While Tony's setting it up, I do have to say that Dave's really been putting in the time on this and um doing some outstanding work and, like I said, in the communication with you guys on the viewpoint. I mean, not only did he maintain the same quality, but I think it's, it's even better, and it's definitely more prescriptive on things that we need in our district, so, that was helpful.
And I really like this, this fact sheet, because when I did do the K-four, K-five orientation, I, it was, it was invaluable to uh, to have. Questions and pictures and things for people to take home, so.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Very nice. How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Excellent.
Happy Monday.
Happy Mondays, Monday night. So, uh, we're gonna go through each one of our segments, so I'll handle the district piece and then each building principal will come up and just kind of give you an update on their goals, but. This is the goal that we had, we had a long-term goal, um, since two thousand and thirteen, that we were going to have all of our curriculum instruction up to date and have it aligned with the Common Core standards or whatever the state has. Chosen to support at this particular point in time, so, um, that's what we did. And uh, this particular year in particular, we wanted teachers developing grade level department common assessments aligned to those standards and really determining at a very specific level how students are achieving or not achieving. So, what I just wanna show you is that, um, if at any time you're wondering what we're up to, then you can go to the CNI webpage. And if you go to the CNI webpage, we have everything that we do very public for everyone to see. Um, so one way that we measure our current progress is if you look at the Curriculum Corner Newsletter, which I believe I sent to all of you. When I sent it out to the staff. On the very last page, um, three years ago, I created a thermometer and we've kept it ever since. So every issue that comes out, um, based upon what, the work that we've done, we report out with this kind of thermometer, so where are we doing? Or where, where are we reaching our goals, what am I doing to move the mercury? So if you, it's kind of small, but if you zoom in, you can see here, what should we be doing this year and where, where am I doing that? So we continuously kind of revisit that every time the, the newsletter comes up. So, that's the kind of the quick snapshot. Um, also available on here, if you look down the side, we have collaborative release days, so if you click on there and you can see all the plans, oops, sorry, wow. Didn't even know you could do that. Um, these are the plans that, for each one of the days that we have, so, um, for example, our last staff development day, if you click on there, this is the six twelve group. You can see what we've been focused on, our quality assessments, rubric reviews, so then we created individual sheets as to. What teachers are doing, so they're actually sitting down with an assessment that they created and assessing that assessment. Is it any good, is it aligned to what we wanted to do, um, and these are all created by teachers and, and all that great stuff, so. Those are on there for your viewing, I won't take you through the entire thing, but each one of these blue links is a, is a link to what our teachers actually engaged in for just one assessment. For just one assessment in particular, so how do I assess this and make sure that it's doing what it needs to do? So, that's a, um, the last thing I was gonna show you was the, the standard, the database that we're putting all the stuff in, but it's not working from the computer on the, via the wireless, you have to be on a secure connection. Um, since we haven't made it public yet.
Can you go down just a little bit, or, or, no, the other way? Where are you, right there, oh, so, I can go there and find out what four, three, two, one really means? If I click on that, shifting from points to proficiency?
Yeah, actually, if you, we have it in a number of spots on here, you can do it there, or, um, the Curriculum Corner, I think it was in, in the first issue, there may have been an article on that, otherwise there was one last year. That we had talked about. Maybe not, maybe it's the executor effect in this one. But yeah, we have that there and I think I do have another document that actually goes in even more depth, but yes, this would be.
If I click on that, shifting from points to proficiency?
Yeah.
They'll tell you what it's all about.
This is the same communication that's been sent home to parents. At, that, all the parents who are, so K-five was sent out to the entire K-five staff and then this was sent out by all teachers using a, a four, three, two, one within their classrooms. It's the same document that I put together and then we kind of just cater to whatever, whatever piece there is.
Four meaning proficient?
Four meaning advanced, three meaning proficient. So, and then, uh, what, coming up this, this Monday is, uh, well, what's that? Um, coming up this Monday is another one of our collaborative release days and we are, we've listened to our feedback from our staff. And we're gonna have a, a technology blitz in the morning, so it'll be at three sessions and teachers can go to whichever one they feel most comfortable with and it's just basically a review of something, so how do we work with a, a grade book or how do I organize my Google Drive or how do I use the cloud? And then we're having a Pulitzer Prize-winning um science journalist come in, Mark Johnson, and um, he's talking all about how um, out of failures come the greatest opportunities. So he's gonna kind of inspire us to go and, then we're gonna go into small groups and talk a little bit about how do we build experiences in classrooms where kids can actually take risks, learn from their mistakes, learn from their, their successes and then, and then move on, so. Um, then the afternoon will be geared again at designing those lessons around those assessments, so, that's where we are.
So that's how you know whether your professional development is working, it goes back to the kids' assessments?
It goes back to the assessments, our measure for our goal was that we would see, we would have the actual physical assessments as well as student examples. That teachers have worked in teams to determine what are proficient or what are not, and then those are built into lessons. So we're actually getting the, the, the stuff.
Student data.
The student data.
And you're building professional development of teachers based on student data?
Uh, I don't know about, it's, it's based upon the, the target, so we create an assessment from the target and then talk about how students did on it. Or didn't do well on it and what we're gonna do next, so it's actually adjusting the instruction first.
Right.
Yeah.
Hoping to get a better result for students.
Yeah.
Although it's not directly looking at data.
It is, but it's not necessarily.
Looking at the target.
I'm sorry?
It's looking at the target.
It's looking at the assessment itself, so, what do we ask kids to do, and that's part of the whole.
Okay.
Thing that if you wanna go look at it, but validity, is it valid, is it reliable, is it something that is corresponding to what we looked for? All those measures that you'll see in the first part, the whole team goes through it, so it's not an individual teacher, so if, let's say, three of us created an assessment for English language arts, second grade lesson. We would all go back to our classrooms, teach the lesson, use the assessment, and then come to the table with our student results. And I'd say, well, why did Quinn's kids do so much better than me, and he'd say, well, because I have a much better personality than you and kids love me, and I'd say, that's probably right, so how do I become more like Quinn so that I can make sure that my classroom is?
Careful with that one.
Is as engaging.
They all, they all don't love me.
Or how, you know, how did that, you know, and the, the idea is that we're sitting and saying, with real student results in real time, use the, uh, the real time that was already thrown out there, how do we make adjustments and what do we do now?
Thank you.
Good? All right, up next, the high school.
So our goal this year centers around really looking at our freshman students, um, this is something that we've been focusing on at the high school for a couple of years, knowing that if we can get students. Off to a good start, that, you know, we're more likely to um have our end result be positive, so. Our measure is looking at ninety, ninety-five percent of the students earning six credits at the end of their freshman year of high school. Some of the things that um we put in place, we took our freshman transition team, which has sort of been evolving over the last um two to three years. And last year, we asked the teachers what we needed to do in order to have a bigger impact. And um their suggestion, we had a um representatives who taught freshmen, one of the things that they wanted to do was include all freshman teachers. Um, so we have a group of um everyone who teaches freshmen and they meet twice a month. Um, the format that they wanted to look at was our first meeting has to do with the teacher expectations that they've developed and refined the last two years. And um, one meeting is focused on them learning from one another about how they can have a, a larger impact in the classroom. And the second meeting is student-specific, and um, that format has changed and evolved a little bit as we've kind of moved through the school year, we started off. Having large group discussions and bringing um lists of students. We have now changed and we have each guidance counselor brings two students per meeting and then um the teachers collaborate around those students. Um, the counselors, let's jump down there a little bit to the bottom, um, this is, all relates to the SLO that they are doing for educator effectiveness. So the students that they're bringing, they are tracking and they have improvement plans for those students as well as um. Including the students in actually taking a survey as to what they think is contributing to their success or perhaps lack of success that they are experiencing. And then from that, they develop a plan with the information from the teachers from that um transition meeting. We um, our, one of our assistant principals, Mr. Seemers, is um, he takes the attendance um as well as. Taking a look at the um freshman transition team and his role in that is, once a week, he meets with the guidance counselors. And that's where they're talking about any students that aren't doing well either with academic progress or attendance, so. Um, they meet and that's where they make their recommendation about who's going to be on the, on the list for that second meeting for the transition team. So, um, the, the freshman transition team really is doing the bulk of the work, um, and they're, they're, they're really excited, so they have. A common teacher expectation as well as a common student expectation, so those are posted in the freshman um classrooms and then. Those lists are things that our policies and procedure council is looking at in terms of, is this something that we want to adopt school-wide? Questions?
Any questions?
Um, okay.
No, go ahead. No questions, I'm sorry, down here.
Do you know how you're progressing towards the ninety-five percent?
Yeah, um, one of the things that we learned in looking at our mid-year data was that um because we run fiscal education as a year-long. You'd think that if you're using six as your end mark, that three credits would be, you know, your final, three credits would mean that you're on track at semester. Um, but really, you're on track if you have two point seven five because of the way that FIDE is awarded at the end of the year, because they meet every other day, so you're really earning. Point two five in health and point two five in PE during that um first semester. Um, so we are actually right now roughly at about um ninety-six percent of the students being on track with a number of credits. Um, so we have the students, another area that I, I should have listed on here, um, anyone who had more than one failure um during second quarter. Everyone who failed a class is assigned a zero hour, but students who are freshmen and failed more than one class are assigned to a different zero hour that has a little bit more of a global. Focus, so they're talking about what assignments and things that are due in all classes, rather than being in a zero hour where they're only focused on the, the one class that they failed. Um, so we have a teacher who volunteered to kind of um take on that group of students in their house with the social studies department. And looking at the data of those students from second quarter who were in that assignment, um, they all made progress. And failed less classes than they were at progress report time, so that's something that we're looking at is the success of that group. Um, but overall, they're, they're doing well, and we're using attendance data from eighth grade and making comparisons to how those students are doing. In ninth grade and having conversations with them, um, to help them identify, you know, where they were struggling in eighth grade, and we have some students who made some really significant. Um, improvements to their attendance, of that list of students in eighth grade, we really only have two students right now who would be in identified um for truancy. So that list is significantly improved.
So that, that's the common factor is, is attendance?
We do not, we do not have a correlation between number of absences to grades, that is not, but we're looking at both of them, because. Obviously, it's important to be here, and, you know, we don't want, we don't want any of the students to have to go through the truancy process, so. It just makes sense to, you know, make sure that we're looking at kids who struggled in previous years and trying to help them identify what they can do to improve and, and be on track this year.
So if there's like that four percent that's in there, that's about ten students?
Yeah, there's like two hundred and some kids in, in the class, yeah, not a large number. We have probably about um twelve kids that we have plans for, um, that we're, you know, working with more closely.
Okay, I do have a comment, it may be um too small scoped of a suggestion, but um, I remember going when we went through the transition last year of just something as simple as class registration. Of not getting any notification that they were going through class registration to even have a conversation with them. And I brought it up to some parents and they're like, oh, you know what, I didn't do that either, so then they started asking their kids and. Is that something that the transition team is looking at involving parents, especially eighth grade year, to say?
We did a parent forum on um registration that was held the night of our, um, it was one of the days we were off school for um the cold weather.
Yeah.
Um, we had about fifty to sixty parents, you know, that attended, so that was part of it, and then from that, um, parents had asked for the information to be sent about when specifically. Um, each class would be met with so that they could have those conversations, so that information um went out in an infinite campus message.
Perfect.
And it'll probably, and I'll probably do a reminder, because we, they'll start heading into the high school classes next week, they've been at the middle school, high school is slated for next week.
And I was at that, I, I thought it was Lowell tended for the, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Jackie did it herself, the person who was supposed to do it wasn't available.
It didn't come in with the weather, yeah.
My wife, maybe it just got easier for her because this is her second child doing this, but she thought that um, the information was much more easily accessible.
We changed, um, so the old um curriculum guide was a basically a PDF of, I think, publisher or something goofy that we don't even have the program for anymore. But it's now a website, so you can go specifically to the content pages that you wanna look at, so, yeah, I think it's vastly improved.
She thought it was a lot, it would have been two years, a lot more accessible.
I would say, and I did just get like an email and it's also on the high school webpage about saying, you know, starting, starting, talk to your students.
Well, and didn't the counselors just come over to the middle school?
Middle school, yeah, middle school is done and high school begins next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, appreciate, I appreciate your knowing every student in your school, it is impressive how hard, you know, you work to get to these kids, I did have one question. What, how confident are you that all of these kids know how to read? Are there some that struggle with reading when they get to the, this, this level still? Do we still have some?
We have students who are in reading interventions, you know, that we've identified, so.
That they can't read?
Not that they can't read, but can't read at the, the level that, you know, yeah.
Right, they can read words, but comprehending, okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Can these be kids that have gone through?
Through our system.
Some kids, yeah, some kids have been in our system, some kids are new to the high school, um, you know, all their circumstances are, are different, um. And some of them, you know, we're, we're looking at um referrals for special education, so we're in a different process than, you know, other kids that were simply, aren't at. Grade level and we're just trying to close that gap.
Well, thanks for how hard you work with that, thank you, Jackie. Okay, next up?
We're going right down the list, uh, that's on the handout.
Right.
So this year, if you, um, at the middle school, we are focusing on closing the gaps for those students who aren't reading at grade level proficiency. So, three times a year, we have our data meetings following, following our map assessments and recently we just had a data meeting following the winter map assessments. I've attached the agenda to kind of show you what we talk about, the first thing, the very first thing we do when we have the uh data meetings is we have a data wall. Where we physically move every magnet for each child, um, it's actually split in two, the left side is the reading. It's actually split into the left side is the reading scores, the right side is the math score. So you can see teachers working on that. And that's a nice visual for us to see every child, not just the students that one teacher may have in their language arts class, but every student, how they're doing as they progress through the year. And it's also beneficial for, you know, maybe teachers who aren't teaching language arts and applied teacher to see as well because they'll, they can say, oh, you know, Johnny's really struggles in reading. That makes a whole lot of sense why they struggle with my tests or things like that. So we come around the data, we talk about it, you know, what, anything standing out? What surprises you? Then we drill down and we really look at those kids on the lower end of the MAP scores and talk about, you know, what are we going to do for them? Are they in interventions? Are they, you know, what do the MAP scores say? Are we probing with AIMS Web, which is a progress monitoring tool? What do those assessments say? And any other assessments we may have given along the way to kind of monitor the progress of the students. And then we talk about, okay, you know, are we going to stay the course? What we're doing is working or we need to change it up because certain things aren't working? Or do we need to look at a specialized referral? And then we also talk about the students who are not in interventions to, but maybe struggling, you know, why? Does this, does their MAP score correlate with their classroom performance? Sometimes we find that students seem just interested in taking the MAP assessment that day and just kind of click through to be done. And, but it doesn't correlate to their classroom, they're doing just fine in classroom. So we talk about those students and we determine if, you know, this is probably a child that didn't take it very seriously or this is really a student who's struggling, what can we do to make sure that they hit the grade level benchmarks as well? And we do this both for math and reading, three times a year.
Do you only take the MAP test twice or do you take it in between? I know the goal is at the end of the year to have ninety.
We take it three times in the fall, in about February.
Okay, so you'll be taking it again coming up?
We'll take it in May.
And that'll be, okay.
What you see here is a screenshot of one of our data trackers that we use with students. This is, happens to be a reading tracker. We look at the students, how they, how they ended last year. And this, this happens to be a sixth grade group. So we look at where they ended last year. We compare it to how they scored in the fall. And we sometimes see some regression in the summer slide. And then we compare the winter. And from those, those fall scores is what we, how we determined, you know, what, are we going to intervene for these students? Are we going to just watch them because they're on a borderline? Or, you know, they are struggling, so Read 180 might be the best course of action for them. Or maybe just a teacher intervention. And then we also talk about, at second semester, the winter, we talked about, okay, how are these students doing? Some of them, as you can see, graduated out, they were dismissed, and they are back in the regular classroom without the interventions. And we're just keeping an eye on them. If they start to slip, we can always pull them back in for support. The teachers are checking in with them to make sure they're still hanging in there. And then we also have a reading specialist, Mrs. Rollard, and she works with some of the students a little more intensely, one-on-one. And then some of the students were actually, you can see it says referral. We're, we're looking at them to start really making sure we're collecting the proper data so that if we do need to move to a referral, we have those weekly probes and the data to demonstrate that the response intervention isn't improving the way we'd like it to. We've color-coded, so the, the orange are the students who are in that, that low range, twentieth percentile and lower. Yellow range is low average, they're, they're making some progress there. And the blue is, they're, they're solidly in the average where we want them to be. So our goal is to make those yellows push into the blue by the end of the year. Any questions?
Good work. I guess my question is, do you have all the resources that you need to really work with these students? You know, because I, you know, there's a lot of, there's a fair amount of yellow there, you know, that obviously, you know, do you have the resources that you need to make to get these yellows into blues or?
We'd always take more resources.
Really, you know, realistically, you know?
Right now, I think we're, we're doing well. You know, I, I think the, the kids are making good progress, the, the interventions seem to really be helping the students. So I, I think we're okay right now.
If we could wave a magic wand, what would, what else would you need? I guess what really, it's just good to know that maybe we're looking at the budget next year and just, you know, what do you need? Here's the numbers, here's where we're at. If you could have more help, where would you, where would we put it?
Probably a reading interventionist or?
Another reading interventionist, okay. You wouldn't have to change the program or anything? You mean just, and what would the reading interventionist do?
We would be using that person more as a tier-three person, so they're getting one-on-one support.
With students, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. When we're looking, you know, the tier-two interventions really aren't improving, helping them improve, so we push them up to that person. So, and also a reading interventionist, reading specialist could be in the classroom, working with the teachers on how to improve instruction around reading, you know, teaching kids how to be better readers in the, in the content area.
Wouldn't that be a coach's job?
Yes, but a reading specialist would have more of that, that specialty. You know, they've, they've gone through the training with the reading certification. Mrs. Rollard, who is doing it now, has that expertise. She actually comes to us with many years' experience. She's in her late seventies, but you'd never know it. And that was one of the things she was really excited about being able to do, but because she has so many students she's working with, she hasn't been able to get in the classrooms and, and work with teachers to co-teach and focus on some of those reading strategies.
How does this year compare to like some of the previous years as far as the number of students that are in, say, the, you know, the yellow and orange bands?
It's probably comparable. You know, we have, we have years where, you know, it seems like more students struggle than others. I'm not overly alarmed by any of it. This seems pretty typical to, to what we see.
Okay, thank you. Next up, HCE and EES. Tag team here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're told to take three minutes or less. It'll never happen.
That won't happen.
By the end of the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, same as Lynn's school, ninety percent of our students scoring below the proficient level as measured by MAP will either be at the proficient level or we will have a personalized learning plan in place for them. And so what we do is we sat down in fall and now again in, in January, and we had data meetings with our staff along with the principal for two days and the reading specialist, math interventionist, and the coaches. And we're going to go over the agenda that we went through with the teachers.
So really, the goal is to bring everybody to the table who's got information to share. And, and so we look at those composites. Lynn talked about her data wall and, and the sheets that you saw, and we've got a, a slide coming up of what those composites look like. But we look at benchmark data, which is a one-on-one test when we sit down with an, with a child individually and listen to them read. So we can hear, you know, is it a decoding issue? Is it fluency? Is it comprehension? Is it a retell? Where's, where's the breakdown happening for the child? We also have the MAP data, which is obviously what we've attached to this goal because it is a standardized measure. And also we have PALS data, which is phonological awareness literacy screener. And actually, that's a new screener that's been, it is standardized, a new screener that was put in place three years ago now. So it has each year added a grade level or two as it's been rolling out. It's part of the, the governor's initiative around reading and having kids ready and readers by third grade. So we currently, actually, we put here that it's K five through second, but actually, we use the screening tool in K four as well, three times a year. So it's, it's really helpful. Again, it's a, it's done, most of the, most of the aspects of the screener are individualized, but there might be some small group pieces too. And so because it has to do with phonological awareness, we're looking at can students, do they understand sounds, letters and sounds? Do they understand rhyme? Do they understand segmentation, taking words apart, putting them together? All of those underpinnings to learn how to be a reader. So that's the data we look at. And we ask the teachers, you know, what are your impressions from the data you're seeing? Meaning, you know, are you getting consistent results across those measuring tools? So are you seeing kids who on a one-to-one basis are actually showing, you know, better results? And maybe the MAP assessment because it is, you know, a computerized assessment is a little bit different, results or the PALS results? We want to know if we think that all of the results are similar or where the differences might fall. And then from there, all of our, both between our schools, because this was our school learning objective, our teachers created SLOs around the, their, this our objective, our school objective. So we wanted to ask them, you know, how are those target groups doing? And have them reflect on, on their own students that they're looking at for their own SLO that they've created through educator effectiveness.
Yes, so number one was just a screener of all the students. We put our eyes on every kid, similar to Lynn's data wall. We have spreadsheets that we use. So we look and we sort and we identify how we're doing universally. And then we look at each of these students that we identified in fall who've now been in an intervention for between six to twelve weeks. And this is our, our January kind of taking a, a stock on where the kids are in those particular interventions. And the idea then is to see, do we follow the same plan that we've been on? Or do we need to change the intervention? Or do we need to provide more time, more frequency, more intensity to that particular intervention? Or in some cases, we're able to dismiss students at this point in time and then take on a different group of students who were like the next tier.
And the pictures were taken by Dr. Holtz in this slide. So it kind of shows, the bottom one is like kind of the old school, you know, move the post-its around as kids progress on their, on their assessments. And then the top one shows, you know, we really have it all computerized as well. But some people like that, you know, they're kinesthetic teacher learners as well. So, so it kind of shows both ways.
So then number three, after identifying the students who were in those eight to twelve week interventions, we looked at all of the students who fell just below that mark, who were just below that fortieth percentile that the teachers had identified. And we have a targeted teach block within the classroom. So what are the things that the classroom teachers are doing beyond what they do universally with those specific targeted groups? And how are those particular students performing? And when we show you the, the next slide, we'll, you can see the identification through a color-coded system, similar to what Lynn has, about how we identify those particular students.
And then we want kids to be engaged in this learning. It can't just be us pouring it all into them. They've got to come to the, you know, the task of learning and figure out that, what they're there at school for. So we actually really spend a good amount of time really helping them set some goals. I would say very much between, by third grade, they already know for MAP assessment, they kind of know what their target number is. And I shouldn't say kind of, they, we, we actually use the tools that are in the MAP in, from NWEA to help the kids set goals and understand where their targets should be for their grade level and where they were and how they can get there.
You can run a projected growth report and it gives, it takes their fall data and then it projects where they will be in spring.
And because we have really nice in live-in time, you know, dashboard that we can see how kids are, are responding to the test, we can have some really frank conversations about, did you take enough time? When you took the test, that was, should have probably taken you maybe forty-five or fifty minutes, maybe an hour. You might have done it in thirty minutes. Maybe you could have slowed down, you know, what's, how they can make those improvements while they're setting their goals.
And as we're preparing for the Badger exam, which will be online component, components, it'll be, we, we know our happy clickers now. And we identify them, small group if we need to, so that we can really zero in on the testing environment that works best for the, for the child.
And if we do have one of those happy clickers, really, truly, the teacher can walk around literally with their laptop and see who's, how fast kids are going and go over and kind of, okay, you know, dial it back, slow down a little bit. But some kids, you know, they, they can still kind of get away from us occasionally, but hopefully that's not the case. And then this is a, kind of, we took the names out to protect the innocent. Took the names out of what our composite forms look like. And this is common between both schools.
So we identify the end of year where children left in, before summer break. And then we identify their fall. This is the reading level. This is where each teacher sits down with each child and has a protocol. And we get a, a particular letter that corresponds with a, a book that they would be reading in their classroom. This is their independent level, not their instructional. Teachers would instruct a level or two up from their independent level. Red is fortieth percentile or below. Yellow is approaching forty-one to forty-nine. Green, we're saying green is go, so green is where you want to be. And then blue is above. And this is just a snapshot of one second grade classroom. And you can see in some cases in particular where you see the red, for instance, we noticed that kids sometimes leave higher than where they come back, especially if they're struggling readers. So we do definitely have to focus on a summer program in which we're getting books in the hands of our struggling, struggling readers because that summer slide is more significant with kids who struggle with their reading. So we look at fall, then we look at winter, and up there are where we want them to be. Those are the levels where we would like them to be. That would identify green if they're within those levels, blue is above. Then we compare those, red, yellow, green or blue, to their MAP scores in fall and winter, whether they're on or off. And sometimes there's correlation between, most often, there's correlation between benchmark and MAP, but not always. And then we have a discussion, what's going on there? Students scoring better in MAP than they are in our benchmark, what's happening there? And then we also look, a third point of data would be our PALS score. And students have to reach a proficiency of thirty-five in the fall and forty-four in the winter. So we identify students who are below there. They will get an X because we have to provide by the state, special intervention for those particular students scoring below in the PALS.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, that's, that's part of the, the governor's directive with the particular act that put this testing in place, that this, all, all of the PALS data goes online and it's a requirement. We have to identify what our intervention has been for those kids. And I think the other thing I just want to, just everything that Chris said, yes. And the one thing that we talked about that we wanted to share is that our benchmark levels have kind of stepped up in the last two years ago, last year and now this year. There were some new levels of expectation, more rigor to where kids should be reading at. And so what we're seeing now is like kind of that winter benchmark for second grade used to be the end-of-year benchmark for, for second graders. So we're, the, the expectations certainly have, have ramped up for, for kids across the board. And, and we're seeing them rise to, to the challenge. So. Let's see, is there anything else? Oh, the RTI on the end, the last column, just response, is the response to intervention. So it also helps like a teacher have a snapshot, know, okay, these students too on that, on that particular snapshot that you can see were in something last year. They were in leveled literacy intervention. So it tells you that, or, well, that's the last year RTI data, thirteen, fourteen. So it just lets them know that this is a child who had intervention in the past.
That maybe didn't work so well?
No, actually, I'm not about necessarily not working, but it really depends on how far behind the student was. And research will tell us that it takes usual, depending on the, on the amount of, of gap, it could take at least two years for that to turn around. And Lynn talked a little bit, I mentioned the probes piece. That's our weekly check on how kids are improving in those interventions. And so we've, you know, we put all of that type of data together to really get an understanding of how they're progressing with the intervention. A lot of those maps that you saw, or those graphs you saw with our earliest presentation, earlier presentation, the trend lines, that's where, that's what we're looking at now in data meetings.
Great, okay. Question?
When I can look at that red and I can see, look, on the PALS, from fall to winter, that one in the middle had, had this, had an increase.
And, you know, and sometimes they're making, they're making gains.
Making gains. So our, the idea is how do we close the gap? So they're making gains, but how do you get to a point where they're closing the gap with the rest of the, remainder of the students?
Another one went from red and now it's closed up and up there.
Yeah, right. What if we waved a magic wand and you could have more help? Where would you put it? What would you need?
You know, we're not giving you it. I'm just kidding.
I think we're very, we're very fortunate that we have, we have reading intervention people in place, we have some math intervention people in place, we have, we could restructure so that we're doing just similar We have, we could restructure so that we're doing, just similar to what Lynn said, a little bit stronger, universal instructional components, some, some more oversight with that. You really can't put that in the hands of just coaches. Coaches are working on instructional strategies and assisting with goal-setting and educator effectiveness. And some of your people with reading backgrounds have a better understanding of how to teach students how to read and how to support teachers as they're teaching students how to read.
Is there another Mrs. Rock?
The reading specialty certification that Lynn referenced is, is a reading teacher certification, and that's what our interventionists have. And in some districts do have coaches that go in specifically around literacy and coach around literacy. Because it is, it really, there's really a lot to teaching kids how to read, very honestly. I mean, there's so many components to it that's, and it changes a little bit over time as kids are, are starting those early, that early understanding of letter and sound to then moving towards comprehension. And when obviously text becomes more complex.
And how to teach kids how to break the code who struggle with breaking the code and being really diagnostic with it.
So, I mean, I think that what we've, what we've been, well, we've been really fortunate at our level because we have reading teachers, reading specialists in place. I think the other thing that we've been really fortunate around there is, as response to intervention has, has rolled out, there's been a lot of good work around interventions at our level that are available for our students. And so we've, we've increased our repertoire of, of resources that we use with kids, depending on what it is that they're really having challenges with. Is it the code? Is it letter sound? Is it comprehension? And we've, we've been able to kind of build a nice menu of, of, of resources that, that can then be used with kids. I think some further training for some of our, our, for our interventionists and coaches around some of those real specific, like Lynn said, maybe those tier-three kiddos. But.
We've been talking about more universal training for kindergarten. Through second grade teachers.
The biggest place that I think.
Around breaking the code.
Kindergarten has taken the biggest ramp up. I mean, they really have, you know, kindergarten over time, the 10 years we've been here, it's changed. It's the place you learn to read now, not first grade.
Oh, you know, that's probably true. That's probably true. Okay, any other questions? This is great for all of you to hear about what's going on in our schools. We've been talking so much about the schools lately, that it's great to hear how our kids are doing and to have that conversation with you, what it's going to be. Now, it's getting late, Dave, so I just wondered if the board, Dave, it's getting kind of late. I wondered if the board would want to just roll this.
It'll just be like two minutes if you want to get it out of the way.
Yeah.
For real.
Is everyone okay with that? And then maybe the last two goals, we can wait until the next board meeting. It's gotten late.
Goal two is the community engagement goal. And if you remember, that's increasing partnerships, community partnerships and district volunteer opportunity, community-wide opportunities and district internship opportunities by 10%. Each of those four categories separated out. So far, we've added, depending on the board's definition of a partnership, I believe we've added as many as two community partnerships in the last several weeks and months. We've got a new member to the school forest advisory committee who happens to be the chair of the Hales Corners Interventional Committee. We're also, we talked about the career summit or whatever, we're going to end up calling it through MITC. I think MITC is, can be considered a community partner. Internships, we've met that goal. I think the goal is, was maybe one, because we, we only have three official internships, we've already added two different categories of interns and three positions. One's a technology support intern and two custodial internships off the high school here. As far as volunteer opportunities, it's kind of loosely defined as how we categorize those, but we did have several people help clear the school forest late in the fall. And I know through Matt's connections with the Greenfield Library Board that he is now on, there is an opportunity to utilize that partnership to gain some opportunities, some out-of-district opportunities for volunteers. So we are well on our way to meeting goal number two by the end of June.
Questions, anyone?
Any questions?
Just want to comment that when I was, I was at the chamber meeting, I had shared with them that we had this goal of building partnerships and connecting people in the professions to our students, right? And I said, if any of you are interested in maybe talking to our kids, well, everybody sent me their card. And it was amazing how the place lit up because it would be great to get more of our kids to have real-world experience. But I realized just asking for them to come in is too loose. After I did it, I'm like, well, we just can't have everyone coming in. And I don't know how we manage that, but that's a conversation maybe for another time. I just wanted to share with you that it was, I got all these business cards. They were really excited to do that. So I'm glad we're working on opening the door. And I know that Colin, Dan Colin, I think is making some connections to come in and speak to our class. I don't know if that's part of this goal, just speaking to a class, but I would hope we could count it somewhere as another connection with our community.
We'll comment wherever you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else, question? All right. So do we want to go ahead and roll over these last two goals for another time? Or do you guys want to keep rolling? Are they long or short?
Yeah, they're a little bit longer, so we can easily put them on the next board meeting.
We can, not a lot.
Because we still have Doug's.
Yeah, we do Doug's quick update. So, okay, we'll roll these, we'll roll these over. I had asked Doug to put, to just give us a brief update because I'm seeing some things in the numbers and I just thought, right now, we're so in the community getting asked questions, people might be asking us, what is happening with the budget? Just give us a brief overview because if what I read correctly about the budget coming out tonight, no, tomorrow night, there may be some real challenges. And you did mention that in your, in your cover here.
Sure. The DPI, a few weeks ago, actually put out on their webpage a preliminary revenue limit worksheet for all districts in the state. And it's what they call a pre-populated worksheet wherein they fill in a lot of the numbers for us. And using that worksheet, it looked like, again, assuming that current law stays in place, that we could be looking at a revenue limit. And remember, that's a combination of general aid and property tax. That's $400,000 less next year than we have this year. Now, will that stay? We don't know. Just as our budget changes from initial presentation to adoption, so does the governor's budget, so does the president's budget. Unfortunately, the release of the governor's budget, just shortly after I had prepared what you had in your packet, I think has raised more questions than answers. Trying, people are trying to interpret, for example, this year, in the, in the revenue limit formula, districts got $75 per pupil. Outside the revenue limit, there was a categorical aid paid, or well, will be paid in March, of $150 per pupil. And from what I've been reading on the School Administrators Alliance webpage and some other places, both the $75 could be gone and the $150. That $150 created $308,000 for us this year outside the revenue limit. It would be disastrous for many school districts in the state if those things continue in place. So at this point, we have the administrative team working on their budgets for next year with instructions to be at or below their budgets for this year. And if the picture gets better as we progress through the process, it's, I think, easier to come back and add money than it is to have to come back three or four months from now and cut a lot of money. So that's where we're at at this point, I guess.
It's a two-year budget proposal. If I read right, he was going to cut in the first year and maybe add stuff in in the second year, but that's all speculation, correct?
Yes, that is speculation. And the net, at least as I've seen it, is going to be, over two years, is still going to be a negative.
So we're supposed to be running our districts like this? On budgets that go up and down and up and down? That just does not make any fiscal sense. And I thought the public should know that that's going.
Well, and we, we talked before the meeting about the Etch A Sketch example that Mr. Borsec did in his column. And if you think about it, every two years, there's a biennial budget. In many cases, there's new legislators and the priorities change. And, you know, yet we're supposed to find a way to deliver all of these things to kids. And as we sit here right now, we don't really have a way unless we take the worst-case scenario of knowing what our revenue is going to be. And as you know, from the pie charts I've used in the past, we don't have a lot of sources of revenue. So here's hoping that people get to the legislators and get at least some of that money restored.
All right, well, I'm sure you'll go through the.
At the finance committee, we will have an update on the current budget.
Yes.
Yeah, normally, it does go through that process. I just asked for an extra little report here. Because the budget's happening now, and if we want to communicate with our legislature, you know, legislators now, it'd be a good time for the board to, to do that, as individuals, you know, let them know, this is a challenge for districts. A more steady source of income would be helpful, at least year to year. We need reading specials. Okay, all right, sorry. Any other comments for Doug? Seeing none, then we will move to the comments from the board, school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. Does anyone have? I did, Kathy and I are working on updating the one that's on the board-only website. So we're working with a couple of those and, but are there any new items that you would like to see?
Well, I think, I don't know if this is exactly what I said. I did send out an email that we should have a legislative committee meeting.
Yeah.
To prepare for, if any of us want to go March 18th to WASB Day at the Capitol, to kind of talk about some of these things, like what we're seeing with our, with our revenues.
I think that'd be great. Also, I was going to ask, because the district testing now, they're proposing changing that. So if there's, we should have that conversation.
I have a whole list of school funding, accountability.
Exactly, that'd be great. That'd be great. Any other items that anyone would like to request? It's been requested that we look at a policy, our policy on meeting minutes. Could we put that on the policy agenda? And the suggestion that I would have is just.
I think we're doing just fine.
To put, no, I would like it on there because there is one thing we could put on there.
Kathy?
He said no. Did you put that in the minutes?
No.
Oh, okay. Quinn said no.
Please, Kathy.
I can start, Kathy, and you can give me the evil eye.
I know.
You're so good.
All right, so that was the only thing that I had under this, under this one.
If you want that on the, on the agenda, so you're going to either give me the information that you.
The policy number.
Just add, yeah, the policy on meeting minutes. And we just want to add that they be posted within one week of the meeting. That's all I'm asking, nothing else.
Committee meeting votes, notes?
No, committee doesn't go in there, that's not.
Be posted within one week of the meeting or one week of.
Right, the meeting minutes. We can talk about committees, that's, I'm not proposing that we add anything about that.
But we can't have discussions, so we need to do that.
Right, that's my proposal.
We just needed the policy number.
I do not know the policy number, I'm sorry. Let's get that on the agenda and talk about that, as been requested by a public member. And, all right. And seeing no, no other comments regarding future agenda items, how about board member announcements?
Well, I, I made it to the principal's coffee for the Edgerton and for the middle school. And while attended by each about four or five parents, it is amazing that the level of knowledge those parents that do come have of what's going on in those schools. It really is. It's, it's refreshing and I know that it is hard for involved parents going from Ed, from Ed, from elementary to middle school. Because all of a sudden, there's the, the hands off. And I know Lynn has, you know, proposed to her and then she already said she's working on a, a type of a handbook or handout to give to parents that eases them into middle school. And I thought that was a really good idea, so.
Okay, I have one. Do you have one?
No.
Go ahead, no.
No, go ahead, please.
You guys go.
Polite.
Mine has to be last.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, because I happened to see this in the minutes, and well, we recognize the dance team here tonight. I also saw our forensics team over the weekend had done really well. And came back with a first-place trophy for small school entry. So I didn't want to, I didn't want.
For state or for competition?
It was, it was 20 schools that battled, and I don't even know where this was, Westosha Central High School?
Sure.
So I thought that was, that was kind of cool. So I just wanted, I wanted, I wanted to make my.
West of the 94. Yeah.
On February 25th, the high school band boosters are having a fundraiser at Papa Murphy's by Pick and Save from 11:00 AM till 8:00 PM. You don't have to show a fly or anything, but 15% of all net sales go back to the band boosters. So it's a great way to get involved, obviously support Papa Murphy's in the community, but support the band boosters as well. And then the wrestling team on Saturday went to conference out at South Milwaukee and had all 14 wrestlers placed in the top four of their weight bracket. So it was pretty exciting. We had Juan, who's a sophomore at Greendale, come in first place in his weight bracket, Nathan Hensley, and the rest are all placed. So it was pretty exciting to see. Wednesday night is the JV conference meet here at Whitnell. So anybody that's looking for something to do, come out and support the JV. And then next weekend is the team, team conference and regionals, so.
Where's that at?
That will be at, it's a good question, West Dallas.
Your son is on the JV team?
Nathan Hale or the, no, the West Dallas, okay.
The actual West Dallas.
Central.
West Dallas Central.
Okay, that's great. That's great, that's exciting, good news. Okay, so I just have one thing. Quinn, would you come up here, please? Well, here's your award, all right, I'll bring it to you.
For what?
For WASB, for achieving level one, for all of the work that he did and all the events that he attends. And I know he comes to conventions and he does things. And so here's your level one, your little pin, you can wear it. Congratulations.
You're full storing a pin to everything.
Professional development, see the board modeling, professional development for, for our staff. So, all right, I can't think of anything else, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everyone, for so late.
Motion.
Thank you all. Seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Holtz, motion carries. Have a great night.